Good morning, welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Everybody knew right when to quieten down, that worked out good. All right, today is Monday, June twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen. It is ten a.m. and all members of the court are present, so this meeting is called order. Everyone will please rise for the invitation delivered by Commissioner Kirkendall, followed by the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for this day. Lord, we thank you for Hardin County employees, their families. We pray your protection and provision over their families, Lord, this week. And, Lord, we just ask for wisdom as we make decisions that impact the county. Lord, we lift up our first responders throughout the county, Lord, our sheriffs, our policemen, our firemen, our EMS. And, Father, we ask that you protect those who protect us, and we ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Item number three, Glenda Austin County Clerk, request approval of the June twelfth, two thousand seventeen, regular meeting minutes as presented.
So moved.
Have motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, Deborah McWilliams County Treasurer, requests the court to cancel all registered claims from the June twelfth, two thousand seventeen, regular meeting as presented.
Moved to approve.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
Um, the total amount of that liability was two million, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, Deborah McWilliams, request approval of cash statement as presented.
In general checking account, we have five hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars and six cents. In our investment account at Wells Fargo, we have three million, one hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-four cents. In tax pool, we have nine million, five hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred fifty dollars and eighty-six cents for a total cash fund of thirteen million, two hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-six cents.
Move approved cash statement.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McWilliams. Number six, Angela Gore County Auditor, request approval to pay county bills as presented. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The pre-approved expenditures for June the twelfth through the sixteenth were thirty-four thousand, two hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. The pre-approved expenditures for June the nineteenth through the twenty-third were five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and four dollars and five cents. And today, June the twenty-sixth, the expenditures for Commissioners Court are three hundred and seventy thousand, forty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. The total expenditures and transfers for the period of June the twelfth through June the twenty-sixth are nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. The gross payroll for June the twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, was four hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and fourteen cents. The total transferred was five hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
Pay the county bills.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts to pay the county bills. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, Angela Gore, consider request for approval to create a new account code in the Commissioners Court budget, zero one zero four oh one two seven seven, titled Cash Match, and transfer thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars from the contingency general line item to the new account code for the on-site sewer facilities project previously approved in Commissioners Court, January twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen.
Moved to approve.
Second. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight, Commissioner Ken Pelt, precinct three, here today to recognize Gerald Lamb for ten years of dedicated service to Hardin County as a heavy equipment operator for Roden Bridge Precinct Three, and wishing him well on his retirement.
Gerald has, uh, it was ten years. And, uh, we couldn't talk him out of retiring. He's got a better job. He's gonna look after a deer farm. Why kill deer? That'll be more pleasant than, uh, playing about, grading on, grading on your road. But Gerald has been a faithful employee, a loyal employee. He'd worked for the county previously, and I was glad to get him back, and I wish you well
Yes, sir.
in your endeavor. And, uh, do you allow your former employers to come shoot deer? Gerald, it's a pleasure to give you that certificate for ten years, and then here's a pen. We appreciate you. Gerald had said he didn't want to speak very long. You wanna say it? Congratulations, Gerald.
Thank you, Lord.
Appreciate you. And you're free to go.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number nine is, uh, for myself to recognize Tom Hughes, maintenance supervisor, for twenty-two years of dedicated service to Hardin County, and wishing him well on his retirement. Tom, you wanna come on up?
Congratulations on your retirement. Tom has, uh, worked for the county, as I said, for twenty-two years. He started out as a jobber, is that correct? And worked there for a number of years under Sheriff Kane, and then, uh, Judge Carroll waited, uh, needed a new, uh, maintenance supervisor. Tom went in for the job and was a successful applicant for that position. Uh, Tom's done a wonderful job for the county for twenty-two plus years. Uh, we appreciate his service, and we wish him well on his retirement.
I appreciate you.
And you said you didn't want to talk very long either, is that right?
I'm done.
Item number ten, introduction, introduction of newly hired personnel by their department head. First, we're gonna start with the county clerk's office. Ms. Austin, will you introduce your new personnel?
Uh, yes, Melissa Ross and Betty Johansson. Glad to have them both.
Now Betty does not know, she's just new.
Everybody's doing very, very well, very good.
Thank y'all very much. Uh, next will be the sheriff's office. Sheriff Davis, if you'll come up and introduce your new, new people to us.
Several new faces. We'll start with, uh, one of the administration, administrative clerks, Kristy Biscamp. Communications and new dispatcher, Elizabeth, or Lily, Oak. In the jail, we have, uh, some new corrections officers, Blake Brewer, who's a former employee, back again. We're glad to have him back. Amanda Weddington, thankful transfer. Amanda transferred from one department over to another, so we're glad to have her. And we actually have two more that couldn't be here today, Andrew Tomas. Uh, I'm sorry. And also Isabella Landavazo. Moving on to deputies, um, Cody Abshire. Cody comes to us from the sheriff's office in, uh, Jasper County, so we're glad to have him. Dwayne Doll. Dwayne, the longtime face for Hardin County, came to us from Orange County Sheriff's Office.
What's his nickname?
I promised I wouldn't. Also, Kendra, did Kendra make it in? We have Kendra Simmons and James Tiner, our other two deputies. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Welcome each of you to Hardin County, and welcome back to some of you. Uh, next we have the Crime Victims Assistance Center. Laura, will you introduce your new person?
Um, we have Penny Kelly. She started out.
Thank you, Laura. And Penny's not a new face, she's just new to that department. Thank you, Penny. Next is the Tax Office. Ms. Cook, will you introduce your new person?
I have a new deputy clerk, her name is Haley Gordon.
And then, uh, Roden Bridge Two, Commissioner, will you introduce Ms. Griffin?
Yep, Ms. BB Griffin. She's been with us in a long time.
So we also have a new face for Roden Bridge Four, and he's gonna come to the next meeting, so we'll put that on the next agenda. Alvin would let him take off this morning, he's gotta work.
Yeah.
Is there anybody that we missed? All right, once again, thank y'all for being here and, and welcome to Hardin County. We appreciate you being here with us. Number eleven is special recognition of personnel by the department head for meeting years of service milestones as follows. First, we have Sherrod Thomas from the Tax Office, here to, uh, be recognized for twenty-five years of service. Ms. Cook?
Twenty-five years. Okay. Today, I want to congratulate Sherrod Thomas for twenty-five years of dedicated service to the Hardin County Tax Office. Sherrod is the supervisor over the motor vehicle registration department and handles the department efficiently, as well as courteous to the public. She's hiding behind me. And the other employees. I hope it's her intention is to stay with me a long time. She's been a steady influence during the transition that we've had this past six months. Now, with that being said, with indulgence, I wanna say a couple more things about her. Hopefully, it's okay. Uh, besides twenty-five years of dedicated service to Hardin County, Sherrod is a published author of two books. Book, uh, encouragement and poetry. She is a singer and songwriter with the beautiful C.D. that she's recorded and wrote all the songs. She does not know I'm saying all this. She is a professional designer and seamstress. She is a much sought-after speaker at conferences from Sillsby to Houston. And last but not least, she has a fan club. My four-year-old granddaughter is the president of that fan club. She loves her adopted Aunt Sherrod. So, what more can I say to that? But congratulations to Sherrod Thomas for twenty-five years dedicated service to the Hardin County Tax Office.
That's what I was thinking. When can we hear her sing?
She's asked to be, uh, excused from that. She is a little bit forced today, so.
We'll get her next time.
Thank you, Miss. Next time.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Next, we have Donnie Gully with the Sheriff's Office, being recognized today for fifteen years of service. Sheriff?
Donnie, uh, Donnie's been with us fifteen years. I think originally started out, uh, was it on patrol or in the jail? I don't know.
School resource office.
School resource office, okay. Uh, now works on patrol, is one of patrol deputies, so again, fifteen years. And as Shirley said, we hope you're with us for fifteen or more. Congratulations.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next, we have Ricky Lucas with Roden Bridge Three, being recognized today for ten years of service.
Ricky has been with us for ten years. He came from the city of Dayton. He was looking for a better deal, and he came to Hardin County. Ricky's been a very faithful employee. He works up in the north and west part of the county where the, uh, residents can be kinda difficult at times. But, uh, he's, uh, done us a good job. Further north than that. He's, he's faithful. We have a lot of good faithful employees. I'm very fortunate to have people like Ricky and Scotty, who'll be coming up. Ricky, congratulations. And he's already told me he didn't want to make any speeches, so. Scotty, if you'll come up?
I got your picture all over Facebook.
Scotty has been here ten years. He, uh, that doesn't include the first little stint you made.
I was gone two weeks.
Yeah. He, uh, Scotty had, uh, worked for us a little while, and then he, uh, decided he wanted to, uh, get an ice cream salesman. And, uh, I wouldn't accept his resignation. I told him, you know, go try it, and he tried it, and, uh, the ice cream was sweet, but the hours were not sweet. So Scotty came back, and he's, uh, done a very good job. He's a heavy equipment operator, and those that, uh, are not familiar with Scotty, at one time, he was about, not quite twice this size. We call him Slim now, but he, uh, Scotty, you've done a good job. Appreciate you.
Yes, sir, appreciate it.
Look forward to having you many more years.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number twelve is adoption of resolution twenty-five dash seventeen, recognizing July nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, as Back the Badge Day in Hardin County. Mr. Roberts?
This is the resolution. It's in support of Back the Badge Day. Whereas the Hardin County Angels of Care, a nonprofit organization formed in two thousand and nine by Executive Director Fay Austin and a group of like-minded individuals, will host its second annual Back the Badge Day luncheon at the Lumberton Performing Arts Center on July nineteenth, two, two thousand and seventeen. And whereas the Hardin County Angels of Care is committed in helping area children who have medical needs by offsetting expenses for various essentials, including medical equipment, surgical expenses, and associated travel lodging expenses. And in two thousand and sixteen, the organization added to its mission of service by holding its first free luncheon for members of law enforcement and other first responders. And whereas Back the Badge Day event provides the camp, community with, uh, excuse me, with a manner in which to give thanks to, to and show support for police officers, fire and EMS personnel, dispatchers, game wardens, prosecutors, judges, and others who dedicate themselves to a career of public service and safety. Whereas by holding peace, keeping offenders off our streets, and placing themselves in harm's way to save lives, these devoted individuals demonstrate the true meaning of valor and bravery, and they are un- undeniably worthy of their fellow citizens' profound admiration and gratitude. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Hardin County, Texas, does hereby proclaim the day of July the nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, as Back the Badge Day in Hardin County, and urges all citizens throughout Hardin County to support their law enforcement officers and all first responders on this day and every day for protecting us and keeping us, keeping the peace.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is that a motion to accept that?
Motion to accept, same.
Have motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And Ms. Austin is here today. Could you just stand up real quick, and let's, uh, thank you for being here? We wanna thank you and your organization for all that you do, and, and especially for, uh, creating this day last year and continuing it annually for our first responders. Uh, it's very important, and we appreciate you doing that. And that's on July the nineteenth, and where is it at?
Nineteenth, at the Lumberton Dome on Highway sixty-nine and Eleventh and Toulon.
All right.
Yes, all of us intend to please come. We do have some special dignitaries, uh, represented, Judge White will be there. Congressman Babbins' assistant will be there, Lady Brown. And we have special recognitions from the Governor coming and the State Senator. But most important, we wanna thank all of y'all. The judges, the police department, the sheriffs, the DAs, fire, EMS, tipsters, rangers, everybody. Because without y'all, we wouldn't be able to make it through our county, our state. Y'all protect us on a daily basis, and we never take the time to say thank you. So this is our way to say thank you to all of y'all.
Well, thank you, we appreciate you. And Commissioners can, can come to that too, right? Yes, ma'am? All right. Good deal.
This is originally how I started the organization, right here. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Item number thirteen, Cody Williford, Construction Manager at RISP with Daniel's Building and Construction Incorporated, here to provide an update on the progress of construction of the new Hardin County Courthouse Annex Building. Commissioner Cooper is the project manager, and I think he had a few words to say, and then he's gonna turn it over to Cody.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, as everyone can see, we're making, uh, a little progress over at the, uh, the new, uh, annex site, just across the street over there. Uh, this has definitely been a learning experience for me. Uh, when the judge asked me to be the project manager for this, I didn't think anything about it. But, uh, I'd probably hesitate to accept that now after, after finding all this out. But we're all making progress. Uh, Cody with Daniel's Construction is our construction manager at RISP. They're doing a tremendous job. Uh, we could get cooperation from the weather. You know, during, during the time that we had no rain and a lot of sunshine, we was in the process of trying to, uh, find some additional money to go towards projects, and we were at a standstill. But now that we're, uh, able to do construction, uh, the rain, the weather's not cooperating. So, uh, I think they're doing a tremendous job, and I'll turn it over to Cody at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, just to give y'all an update where we're at, uh, y'all can see to some degree, uh, where we're at. But we've gotten, um, drill peers put in place. We've got all of our underground electrical and plumbing stubbed up. Got anchor bolts set, had the exterior grade beams formed and poured. And like Mr. said, we need some good weather. Um, as of right now, if we have perfect weather this week, which, um, I'm not gonna hold my breath, but we're planning, we would like to pour the slab on grade this Friday, if the weather holds. But the good thing about that is we have about three to four weeks before the metal building arrives, so we've got a little time there. If we were to pour it this Friday, there's a few things we could do on the exterior of the site, and then we may have a week or two of really no work happening until that building shows up, which is good, allow the concrete time to cure. Usually, uh, twenty-one days is a good, um, target for a, a good strength, tensile on your concrete. Now that we know, we just found out that date today on when the building arrives, around July the twenty-first, or that week, uh, we're gonna start formulating a real schedule. Once our slabs pour and the building's here, then we can really kinda, you know, uh, drill into, to what our schedule looks like. Hopefully, the unknowns won't be as unknown. But like Commissioner says, it's, I've been doing this for over fifteen years, and every day's a learning experience. There's always something new. But, um, I have, I submitted a bill to the architect for the month of May, but it got kicked back to me. My front page wasn't corresponding to my last page, it was a, a formulating error, so I've gotta get that correct, and we'll get that back to you. Um, and then we'll be billing for the month of, of, of June for the work that we've completed. And then I had a question, I didn't know, y'all may have some information, on the, the grant for the generator. Didn't know if y'all have an idea yet, or, or what. I know you had a, kind of an idea of a time.
I don't see Ms., uh, Teresa in here right now, but I did touch base with her about two weeks ago, and it was still tentatively in August. Is that great?
August, okay.
Yes, sir.
Before we but hear anything.
They're still taking applications right now, so. But they're, they hope to let us know by mid-August.
Okay. Um, that's something we'll, we'll need to work through with our, our contractor, our sub and engineer. They're, they're wanting to get, there's some things that they need to know now, if we're gonna use that size generator or not, but we'll, we'll work through all that. But, um, if y'all have any questions, y'all feel free to call me, uh, go visit with Russ. We wanna keep y'all in the loop, let y'all know what's going on, and, uh, do y'all a good job.
We appreciate that very much.
Cody, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what's the update on the A.C. and electrical? Were we able to save any money there?
Um, we had a meeting, uh, three weeks ago with the engineer, and we're still waiting on some information back from him on how he wants us to proceed. Um, my mechanical subcontractor, he has taken upon himself, he's out researching some additional ideas. We don't know if it's gonna work with the building code and the way this building's set up, but, um, I know my guys, our subs, are working towards that. I've told them, we wanna save y'all as much money as we can.
When you're talking about building code, you're just talking about accepted standards that the architects use?
That the architect and engineer will allow us to.
Not a local code, or even a state code.
It could possibly fall under the state code. But whenever he gets that information, we'll relay that to the architect and engineer and let them determine if that will be suitable.
So has there been any budget overruns or anything as of this date?
Knock on wood. Well, not that we all, sorry, no, it's, microphone's on that. Uh, knock on wood, so far, not, um.
The, uh, Architect, Commissioner Kirkendall sends me a, a periodic email. He does, uh, site walkthroughs and everything, and each time that I get one of those, I, I'm not sure the judge gets it. I, I could forward it to the other commissioners, but one indication on there is they're staying on top of the, uh, idea of looking into, uh, the mechanical and, uh, electrical as far as the questions that the court had about saving money. So soon as engineers get that, uh, information, I will forward it to everybody, so. And we're also gonna start doing a two-week, uh, with, with the architect and myself and, uh, representative from Cody's office.
Yes, sir. And then if we need, uh, certain individual subcontractors at that time, we'll bring them in. Any of y'all are welcome to come if you want to.
It's gonna be every other Thursday, if anybody, it's gonna be on-site, so if anybody's interested in that.
Do y'all have a time yet?
I believe it's at ten a.m.
I think that's.
I think it's on the calendar.
I'll send an email and let you know.
Yeah, if you're looking at that.
But we, um, also, Commissioner, just to let you know, um, you know, there was some delay, looked for money, but we had gotten the metal building ordered back. You know, we got locked in with them, 'cause, and that was a good thing, because, uh, metal prices have experienced about ten percent increase that we didn't get hit with. So, you know, it was prudent that we, we went ahead and issued that P.O. back when we did. But, um.
Thank you. Commissioner, any other comments?
I've got a question. Cody, I know that the schedule's sorta unpredictable until you get the slab poured and the metal here, but once that happens, do you have just a rough estimate of when this building would be completed?
Rough shoot from the hip would be about six months. We're, we're, I talked with my guy this morning, Russ, over at the site, so, you know, we wanna, we don't wanna force quality. We don't wanna force time for quality, but we're gonna do everything we can to get you in quickly. It's best for us to get done and off the site, but we're gonna be evaluating that. I, I would shoot from the hips at about six months. That may be a little bit of a stretch. We might can tighten it up. There's nothing too extravagant inside. Please don't write that down, though. I'm just kidding.
I was watching the news lately, he was definitely writing it down.
I still got September twenty-ninth on my.
Yeah.
Mr. Roberts, anything? Cody, we appreciate you. We'll probably get you to come back here in about four to six weeks.
Sure.
Update us again.
Anytime you want.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, it'll all be good news. Maybe we'll get, get an award or, or something at the end.
Yeah.
May, maybe, you never know.
Depends on the bill.
Hey, you might get one of them, uh, five-year awards for being an employee of the county.
It's a good idea, man.
Thank you, Cody. Item number fourteen is Amy Campbell with the T.D., T.C.D.R.S. Employer Services Manager. She's here today for a presentation and discussion of Hardin County's two thousand and eighteen plan year with the Texas County and District Retirement System. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners, members of the court. It's a pleasure being here. Your employer services rep is Ross, Ralph Wallace. Um, he's in Armstrong County today, which is clear on the other side of the state, so I'm here in his place. Um, I'm gonna spend the first part of the time just going over the plan, talking about, um, your benefits and costs for next year. Then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. And at any time, feel free to stop me and ask questions. Um, I provided you with the packet, and, and, um, the presentation is, as you look at it, would be on your right-hand side. So T.C.D.R.S. turns fifty years old this year, believe it or not. On May the fifth, we had our fiftieth year birthday. And from the very beginning, the Texas Legislature, um, designed us to do retirement right. And there are three main reasons that are unique, um, qualities that set us apart from the other public pension plans in the state of Texas, like E.R.S., which is the ta, state, or T.R.S., which is the Teachers Retirement System. And the first being is that we're a savings-based plan. So as your employees are working, they're saving for their retirement through their payroll deduction. They have their own accounts, they're putting their own money in, it's building interest. At the same time, you as a county are making contributions on their behalf to a county account, so that when your employees get ready to retire, like the two gentlemen that were here today, the money has been saved for in advance. So, um, it's not a pay-as-you-go system. It's saved in advance for future retirement. So your current employees and you are saving for their future retirement. The next one is responsible funding. By state statute, you all have to pay a required rate that actuaries determine on an annual basis. Um, you do have flexibility and local control at the county level, and that's why you review this plan every year. You decide if you're gonna leave things the same, if you need to make, um, if you have a tight budget and you need to reduce costs, or if you need to enhance benefits to fit your employees' needs. Currently, and I'm on page two, second slide, currently we have seven hundred and thirty-five employers that participate with T.C.D.R.S. We have two hundred and fifty-one counties. I'm proud to say Ford County just joined last November. We have one last county that just doesn't have the population and the budget to do it right now, and that's Motley County. Um, the rest are gonna be districts, hospital districts, appraisal districts, water districts, when the, in the state of Texas. We service over two hundred and eighty-two thousand Texans, and at nearly ninety percent funded, that puts us in the top fifteen percent of all public pa, plans nationally. Um, I think the first slide on, on page three is interesting. Last year, we paid out one point two billion dollars in benefit payments on behalf of our employers of all the counties and districts that participate in T.C.D.R.S. And four point, over four point five million dollars of that were sent to addresses within this county, within Hardin County. Um, so that speaks volumes. Um, in the state of Texas, we do an economic impact study, and we know that over ninety-six percent of people that live and work in the state of Texas stay in the state of Texas. So that money comes right back to your no, local community. Um, I'm gonna skip to page four, um, top slide. Talk a little bit about your plan of benefits here at Hardin County. Your employees are depositing seven percent of their money into their own account. Talk a little bit about your plan of benefits here at Harden County, your employees are depositing seven percent of their money into their own account, and at retirement, they're matched two to one, or two hundred percent, and again, that's only at retirement. So those matching dollars are not, um, passed through to the employees until they actually, um, are vested and eligible and choose to retire. Your vesting is eight years, that means that you require your employees eight years of service to earn the right to retire from you some days to get those matching dollars. And then, um, your eligibility, um, your employees with eight years of service, if they are age sixty, they're eligible to retire. Or if their years of service plus their age equals seventy-five, then they'd be eligible to retire. Or if you have employees that work for thirty years at any age, they'd be eligible to retire. Um, the optional benefit that you offer to your employees is a group term life, and that's for your active employees. And that is a benefit that is funded a hundred percent by the county. Um, employees are the, are the benef- or the employees' families are the beneficiaries, and the benefit is one times their most normal annual salary. Um, and that would be paid upon their death, um, to a beneficiary that we have on file.
Can I jump in right quick and ask one question?
Absolutely.
You had talked about the rates that the county pays, uh, and I know you haven't got to that yet, but you did mention it, and then you look over here at the, uh, employer match rate of two hundred percent. The question I have is, if we have employees in the county that leave prior to being vested, they get what, when they leave, they get what they have put into the system? The county match, does that help our rates? Because they don't get that, it stays in there, but does that help our rates?
It absolutely does, and there's a slide, it's called Reasons for Rate Change, and I'll go through that, but yes, as you have people separate service, if they withdraw their funds, they forfeited, forfeited the right to that future match. So the re- the, the kind of piece of the pie that was saved for them is redistributed through all county employees, and that can cause a rate-reducing, um, experience.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the bottom slide on page four just simply shows how much, um, income is replaced over time. Texas County and District Retirement System is a defined benefit plan, so it's meant to replace someone's income in retirement. It is also a savings-based plan. Um, like I said on the first slide, your employees are saving over the course of their career, you're saving over the course of their career, the longer the wor- they work, the more they save, the more interest they earn, the larger their benefit's gonna be. That's different than like the state of Texas, which is ERS. If you're a state employee, you, you participate, but your benefit's gonna be based on your highest three or five years of salary, and then your length of service, and some multiplier, one point oh, one point two, one point five. That's not the way our plan works, it simply is the account value of your employees, um, when they get ready to retire, is matched. So this income pla- replacement ratio slides shows the longer you work, the more income at retirement, um, employees will match. All right, page five, top slide, for twenty-eighteen, your rate, um, to fund, the plan is fourteen point one-four percent, and that's a percent of payroll. And this does two things, it's investing in your current employee's future benefits, and it's paying down any unfunded liabilities that you have in a closed twenty-year period of time. Um, that ensures that you're not, um, ki- kicking the can down the road, for better lack of term to say, um, there's not future debt to future generations of commissioners' courts. Um, and your funded ratio as a county is about eighty-five percent, which is very healthy, um, Moody's, um, Fitch, S and P, the ratings agencies, they really look at plans over eighty percent funded as a healthy, um, plan, especially for counties or permanent entities, you all are expected to go on and on. The bottom slide on page five, and this is the reasons for rate change, and this is, would kind of addresses your question as well, Commissioner. Um, your rate started, um, or currently is thirteen point nine percent. Um, the second, uh, line says, "Plan changes adopted." At this point in time, we don't know if you're gonna adopt any changes, so that's to be determined. The investment return result, um, you see is a zero point four five. We have losses in the pipeline from twenty-fifteen. We smoothed losses and gains over five years to allow the market to, um, correct itself. It also allows your rate to say, to stay fairly stable, you don't get big peaks and big valleys in it. So fifteen, um, uh, we still have a little bit of time for that to roll off. So that was, even though it's a positive number, we call that a negative plan experience, because that increases your rate. But then you see below that, you have an elected rate, or a lump sum, and, um, that helped your rate, it's a negative number, so that reduced, it, it's a minus, um, reduced your rate by point zero four, and that's because you paid a little bit more than what was required this year. And then demographic other changes, that's the, um, um, minus point one-seven, we can attribute that to withdrawals. And having that county money being, um, absorbed into the plan for other people, and then no obs- um, assumptions or methods, that we didn't make any changes this year that would affect your rate. So, the top of slide six really shows the flexibility and local control within our plan from the highest benefits to the lowest benefits. If you look at the top right-hand side, the highest benefits is a seven percent employee deposit rate with a two hundred and fifty percent match, down to the, the basic benefit, which is a four percent employee deposit rate, and a one-to-one or one-hundred percent match. So, the rate can go as high as over sixteen percent to as low as below eight percent, um, depending on employee needs and your budgeted, what you have budgeted. I had to spend just the last couple of minutes talking about our investments. Investments drive the foundation of our plan, investments are very important. Um, and we understand that the risk that we take is passed directly on to our counties and districts, so we have to be diligent and prudent in our, um, investment management and strategy. Currently, seventy-seven cents of every benefit dollar paid out, of that one point two billion dollars paid out, came from our investment earnings. Thirteen cents came from employer contributions, and ten cents of the one point two billion dollars of every dollar, um, came from employees' own pockets. You can see on the bottom of, um, page seven, we have a diversified portfolio, this helps us to reduce risk, that allows any one area of the market, um, to be up or down in the other areas to support it. We are diversified across asset classes, but also within asset classes. And if, if any of you sitting on the court are very interested in our investments, you can go to our website, we have daily returns. You can actually drill into each asset class and into the sub-assets, it will tell you our returns, who we're, um, invested in, who the managers are, what the fees are, there's a lot of information. As well is on our website, each one of these asset classes has about a two-minute, thirty-second video explaining what they are and why we invest in them, so it's...
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Um, what are your actuaries forecasting for, say, the next twelve to eighteen months?
For investments?
Yes, because we have a lot of investments on paper, and, uh, you know, the financial industry has issued warnings about, uh, about the automotive bubble that exists, like the housing bubble.
Right.
The how, uh, cars have been overpriced and financed, and so how much of our, uh, investment is in the auto industry?
That, I would be happy to find out, I don't know that right off the top of my head.
I would love to know that, because I know it's a sincere.
Okay.
Uh, it's a sincere concern of economists, yeah.
Um, we are well diversified, but let me write that down real quick. Um, currently, uh, we are up almost seven percent for the year. Um, we, our assumption is eight percent, and I will talk about that assumption here in a min- in a minute. Uh, what I can tell you is we look at capital market research, and we look at forward ten years to, um, that builds our portfolio to achieve our assumption of eight percent. And then we use benchmarks on an annual basis to look back, to make sure that we are outpacing or outperforming the benchmarks, which are the like, um, assets in which we do, um, invest in. Also, our Board of Directors meets quarterly, and they review all of our investments at that time. So, um, and, and if and when changes are made, they are made, although our philosophy has remained relatively the same since we diversified in the, in the early nineties, our assets and our diversification certainly does look different.
You know, there's a conference coming up this month?
It is, next month, yes.
I went to it, oh, your poor ass, I don't know if you've been, Chris, but it's very informative, it's a good conference.
I enjoyed it.
Fantastic, that's at the end, end of my presentation, the invitation to please join, and you get to talk to our, um, Chief Investment Officer, and he'll tell you, you know, more than you've ever wanted to know about what he thinks and where we're going. So it is, um, a great conference, thank you for that compliment. Top of page eight, um, shows our returns, we had a seven point five percent return in twenty-sixteen. Our board cho- chose to use some of our, um, reserve funds to allocate to, um, the investment returns to make it an even eight, so there were no losses or gains in the pipeline this year, so there is no negative or positive experience for you all. More importantly is to look, um, to the right of this chart, to notice that the thirty-five-year return is the nine point six, or the thirty-year return is the eight. We have employees that are staying employed with, with their counties and districts for about twenty years, and then they're retired for twenty-plus years. So our investment time horizon is about forty years, um, as people retire, new people are coming on. And unlike individual, um, investors, we don't have to move portfolios, um, or try and preserve principal because our, um, system is forever young, we don't have an aging system. So, we don't have to become more conservative, and then accumulate, and then we're co- more conservative and accumulate. Um, our operating fees are one-quarter of one percent of our assets, and we don't charge any fees to our employers. And you can see at the bottom slide on page eight, this, and you can't see the gray band very well, but the brown line in the middle, that's an eight percent return, that's our assumption. We have a risk tolerance of plus or minus twelve percent. So in any given year, we expect volatility of twelve percent above eight, or twelve percent below eight. And you can see in each year since nineteen ninety-six, our portfolio has, uh, performed exactly as we expected, with the exception of two thousand eight, which was a great recession, and the recovery the very next year, in two thousand and nine. So what's next? Um... Plan paperwork came out, um, late April, so you're in the middle of, of budget, that sort of thing right now. Your decision on what you're gonna do with the plan is due to us on December fifteenth. Are you gonna pay an elected rate, are you gonna increase benefits, are you gonna decrease benefits, are you gonna remain the same? So you just need to let us know that by December fifteenth. July, um, the end of July, on, let's see, July twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth is our conference. We would love to have you. Um, commissioners do get sixteen hours' worth of credits. Um, HR gets credits, auditors gets credit credits, treasurers get credit, so, um, we offer a lot of CE for that. But at this point in time, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Have we received, uh, what it would take, uh, for a, for our retired cost-of-living adjustment?
Uh, and, well, that is available now, um, it used to be in this plan assessment, it was on a little chart, we ha- now have a calculator online that we can just put in what cost-of-living adjustment you're interested in, and it will give you, um, the cost, and then it'll give you a chart with a projection of the rate we'll, would go. If you let me know what that is, I'd be happy to run that for you, or Ralph would, um, but we don't, we don't publish them, uh, in the plan assessment anymore.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Somebody else? Thank you very much, Ms. Campbell, we have several employees here in the audience, does anybody have any comments or questions for Ms. Campbell, or I'm sure she's got some cards, if any, any of you would like to contact her in the future? All right, they made it easy on me.
Let me off, this is real easy.
Thank you again for your time here today.
Thank you.
All right, item number fifteen is acceptance of annual road reports for all Roden Bridge precincts. I move that we accept all of those annual road reports, we do have all four, uh, precincts in the package. A motion by the chair and a second by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number sixteen, Misty Sims, purchasing agent, permission to solicit bids for purchase of Roden Bridge emulsions for all precincts.
I move.
Thank you. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number seventeen, Misty Sims, discussion impossible, action to award bids for construction services related to Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program for the North Sealeby Channel Improvement Project, which is GLO contract DRS number two-two-zero-zero-zero-two. Ms. Sims?
Bids were opened on May fourth, two thousand seventeen, at two PM in Commissioner's courtroom. Erica Singletary, Bob Thurber, who's the engineer, along with representatives from some of the construction vendors, were present. Norman Highway Constructors was the lowest base bid, at two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty cents, and, and also the lowest with the added alternate, at two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty cents.
And Commissioner, Commissioner Kirkendall, this is in your precinct?
Yes, sir, I moved to approve.
And I think you were on the committee, right?
Yes, sir.
And I think I talked over you, what was that?
No, I moved, moved to approve to the lowest bidder, Norman Highway Construction.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And Mr. Thurber's here today, thank you for being here, Mr. Thurber. Number eighteen, Misty Sims, discussion impossible, action to award bids for towing services pursuant to the county's junk vehicle abatement procedures. Ms. Sims?
Bids for towing services for junk vehicles were open on June twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, at two PM in the Purchasing Department, front office. Myself, Amanda Young, Erica Singletary, and Pat Mitchum were present. This is what, um, the vendors are offering, they pay the county for a vehicle. Spanky's Wrecker Service was five dollars and ten cents per unit, and Payne's Wrecker Service was eighty-two dollars and fifty-six cents per unit.
Ted, can you kind of explain how that works?
They would pay us per vehicle that they picked up, according to our policy, how, how we declare them junk vehicles, and then we report them. They would pick those up and store them until the legal proceeding part of it was done, and then they would destroy them.
And they pay the county this amount?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what we understand it.
So the high bidder would be Payne's Wrecker Service, that would be the, that would be the one that is the obvious to go with, I would think.
Move to approve to the high bidder.
Thank you.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And for the record, that's Payne's Wrecker Service. Item number nineteen, Misty Sims, permission for county judge to sign emergency disaster right-of-entry and land usage agreement for temporary debris res- debris storage and reduction site between Harden County and Richard Row and Camille House Row.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt, any discussion?
Misty, um, still trying to get ahold of her? If we get a chance, can I meet her and visit with her?
Sure, um, so far it's just been by mail, but I think I do have a telephone number for her.
Okay, 'cause I know Commissioner...
Did I give you her phone number?
You did, and I haven't heard back, so...
I have a cell phone number, I can give you, I'll give you all the numbers.
Yeah, if you wanna email it to me, that'd be fine, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty, Misty Sims, permission for county judge to sign emergency disaster service contract for debris removal between Harden County and Ashbread Incorporated.
I move to second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, before we move on to item twenty-one, there's two things, first of all, uh, our, uh, audit was not ready to present at this meeting, as we had hoped. Uh, Angela has been in contact with the, uh, firm performing the audit, in fact, they've been on the phone quite a bit all weekend, as well as, uh, Candace McKenney from her office. And, um, it looks like I had asked if, a couple of commissioners, if they were available Friday, and, uh, I think you have something that afternoon. I, I'd like to set a special meeting for one-thirty on Friday, but I'd like to find out if everybody's available for that, I know Friday afternoons are tough, but, uh, they have in- indicated that they could have the, uh, at least the draft ready for us to accept on Friday. And, uh, if everybody's available, I'd like to set that as a special meeting.
If we could do one-thirty, I couldn't do any later than that.
Right, you had told me that. Commissioner Cooper, is that good for you?
Yes.
Commissioner Pelt, I know that was maybe not good for you, but you said, go ahead?
I can possibly make it.
Okay.
We couldn't set it for the morning, huh?
Um, I could set it for eight-thirty that morning, but they had asked us to do it as late as we could, but we could do it at eight-thirty that morning, and I, I think...
Yeah, eight-thirty would be a lot better for me.
That better for everybody else?
I prefer eight-thirty.
Okay, eight-thirty, Friday morning, good for you, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Cooper?
Mate, we pay these people, they can do what we can.
Sort of my thoughts, no?
Yeah.
Especially as long as it's been getting it.
All right, eight-thirty, Friday morning, June the thirtieth. We'll have a special meeting, and, uh, the only item on that agenda will be to accept the, uh, presentation from the firm on our audit.
And Angela, you'll be bringing them up?
Angela is not available Friday morning.
But I'll pass that on to Candace.
There you go. All right, unless anybody has an objection, I'd like to take a short break before we start on the budget workshop.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna take a ten-minute break, we'll come back at eleven o'clock.